Five, four, three, two, one. We're rolling.
Special council meeting, Morganton City Council meeting, June 22nd, 2015. And I want to do something a little bit different. On our special meetings, we don't generally have a prayer, but due to the tragedy that happened in Charleston last Wednesday night, I think it's very appropriate. And I have asked Reverend Max Bristol to lead us with our prayer tonight.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, all wise God beyond our comprehension, we do acknowledge Thee only. We thank You for Your grace and mercy extended to us and made fresh daily. Thank You for our leaders tonight, that Your presence will guide their thoughts as they make decisions to draw all of our citizens into a community, to live together, to work together, to laugh together, to cry together, and to share one another's burdens. Tonight, we most humbly have in our hearts the entire city of Charleston, South Carolina, and pray that they will trust in You as they suffer through the pain of their loss. We pray for each family that lost loved ones, who were gathered in Your name to worship, to study Your Word, and to be better citizens. Yesterday, we could not help but wonder what it could be like at Emmanuel AME Church. Lord God, only You can give us the kind of love that allows us to see our own unworthiness in ourselves before a holy God, which gives us the power to forgive others who cause sufferings among us. This evening, we not only pray for the families that have suffered loss, but the individual that was used to carry out this act of violence and his family. May the peace of God cover the city of Charleston and our nation, that we turn back to the Word of God and seek His face, that our land may heal, that their community may heal. Let us continue to ask You, Almighty God, to search us and know our hearts, try us and know our thoughts. If You see any wicked way in us, lead us in Thy way everlasting. We give You honor and reverence, as there is nothing greater than the living Word of God made alive in us. Thank You, Lord, that we live in a city that we truly love, people that truly want to live together with leaders that care about the people they serve. Lord, we are truly thankful to live in the city of Morganton, where families can be families, children can be children, where we can live and feel safe. God bless the city of Morganton, the state of North Carolina, the United States of America, and we pray for the peace of Israel through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Max, wonderful prayer. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm on first public hearing that we're going to do is a public hearing to consider, and I'm going to open it up to consider a non-contiguous annexation petition submitted by Roswell Hop LLC for 0.521 acres located at 1014 Salem Road. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against that annexation into the city? Close the public hearing, council.
Make a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing approximately 0.54 acres of non-contiguous property into the corporate limits of Morganton effective June 30th, 2015, located at 1014 Salem Road.
Second. Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item, the most important item, is a public hearing to consider the city of Morganton budget for the fiscal year 2015-16. And I'm going to open the pub-- well, Sally, you talk, and then I'll open the public hearing.
You want to open it first?
There you go.
I think you open it first. Okay, thank you. You'll recall that at our June 1st, regular scheduled June meeting, we talked in quite a bit of detail about the proposed budget before you. That budget has been available at City Hall, at the library, and also posted on our website since that time. And tonight, I will hit the highlights of that, and I'd be glad to answer any questions and then open up for the discussion. It's a $72.9 million budget. That's a little bit less than the current year, the 14-15 budget, about 1% less. It includes $9.7 million in capital improvements and projects. 4.4 million of that is in the general fund, and 5.3 million of that is spread out amongst the utility funds, the electric, water, sewer, and cable. In the general fund, we are proposing to leave the tax rate at 53 cents per $100 value. That is the current tax rate that we have today. One cent on that tax rate generates about $158,000. The downtown municipal service district tax is recommended to stay at 14 cents per $100 value. One cent on that tax rate generates about $8,400, and that has been the tax rate for over 20 years in the municipal service district. The budget includes $800,000 in partnerships with governmental entities, BDI and Burke County and Caldwell County, Lenore, on several projects that we work on together. That equates to about five cents on your tax rate, so it takes five cents of your tax rate to support those partnerships. Includes the loss, recognizes the loss of $215,000 that used to come to us in the form of privilege license taxes that was done away with by the General Assembly, and that represents about a cent and a half on the tax rate. No increase recommended in the garbage fee. That is recommended to stay the same at $10 a month. No recommended increase in water rates. No recommended increase in sewer rates. A slight decrease in electric rates, an average of about 2%, and that would go into effect with the August 1 billing, August 1 of 15. No increase in internet and phone service fees, and a $3 per month increase in cable that would go into effect January of 2016, and that would be for basic programming, and that goes toward the increase in programming costs that we receive from the program providers each year. The budget presented to you is a balanced budget. It does begin to do some additional capital projects than what we have done in years past. We have talked about those. Those are the highlights. I'm happy to try to answer any questions, and I guess we're ready. You ready for comments?
Okay, the public hearing is open, and I'd like for anyone wanting to speak for or against the budget, come to the microphone and state your name and where you reside.
Hello, my name is Elliot Lidle. I'm a downtown business owner, and I own a home in the city limits of Morganton. I'm not really here to speak for or against anything so much as just to make a statement and return to some amenities in parks and recreation and let the presence of our group be known. I've got a pretty short little thing here. It's a-- won't keep you too long. We're here to advocate for a cement skate park in or near the downtown area. Knowing the capital budget proposed now includes funding for Parks and Rec, we thought that this would be a good time to make our presence known. If anybody's here for a skate park, could you raise their hands? Okay, these are some folks. We're not here to try to persuade you to include this in the capital budget this time around. We know that ship has sailed, and it's just simply here to make our presence known and make a statement. We realize that public input for these sorts of things can be reactionary with people responding well after the decisions are actually made, and I think this is probably due to general lack of knowledge about how funding decisions are made. My personal goal in advocating for a skate park in Morganton was not only to push for a park to be built, but to better understand how decisions are made in city government. I've been attending the advisory commission meetings for the last six months, and I'm pretty shocked at how little input I've seen from the general public. I realize that the absence of such input, the folks that make the decisions do what they feel is best, and I can't really blame them for that. I plan to keep on attending those meetings on behalf of the group I represent until there's a park in Morganton, hopefully. I don't fault the city for the lack of input so much as I fault the people. In order to get something done, you need to make a real effort to understand the process and realize that instant results are not practical, and it will take time and involvement to get things done. And most importantly, that if we stay involved, that the city will eventually have no choice but to take us seriously and consider our request, especially in the absence of very much public input anyway. To deny us that would suggest there's no real avenue for public input when it comes to parks and recreation, and that's a disturbing concept for me. In short, we're here, you know, we're not going to go away. We're going to be consistent and stay involved, and hopefully our numbers will grow. We advocate for a permanent cement skate park here in Morganton and believe that the park would not only make skateboarding safer for skaters and lessen instances of private property damage downtown, but would also be a real draw for travel and tourism. I've been skating for 27 years. I rode my skateboard around Marion and Morganton when I was a kid. Today, I travel to Asheville every week, and I buy food, I get a pint of beer, I go shopping. When I'm at these parks, I meet people that are always from other places, you know. So in closing, there's a few facts I would like to tell you about cement skate parks. The cost of a skate park would be in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000. That's for a 6,000-square-foot park. It's a really small footprint. A good example would be the skate park in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, and it's about the same amount as the kitchen renovation that's proposed in the Mountain View Recreation Center in this year's budget. So for the price of renovating a kitchen, you can basically do this thing. And once you build a cement park, yearly maintenance and upkeep is almost nonexistent. If you do it cement, the cement's there for decades. You had very little surface treatment. It's not like you're resurfacing wooden ramps. There's no need to staff a skate park. You create a skate-at-your-own-risk Plaza-style park. It requires no special insurance riders. That's a myth. It's no different than making a park like a playground, like a Martha's Park or something like that, or a soccer field. It's the same sort of insurance situation. If you do have a staff, then you do have to consider other insurance riders, but if you leave it open, skate-at-your-own-risk park, there's no special liability issues at all. And only 5% of injuries related to skateboarding happen at skateboard parks. Most of them happen out on the street, where, you know, the kids are riding in traffic and things like that. And we truly believe positioning one in or near the downtown would be a real draw for travel and tourism and kind of be a good match for some of the breweries and some of the more progressive things that are happening here. A lot of the people my age, the sort of Gen Xers, are, you know, they travel to these cement parks regularly. I've been to 20 or 30 up and down the East Coast, and I plan my vacations around them and whatnot, so. And that's it. Thanks for your time, and I would hope moving forward that we keep, you would help, you know, keep this on the radar for Parks and Rec. I intend to continue to go to the advisory commission meetings and build my organization, and we are ready to fund match and also organize fundraising and whatever we need to do to do our part, and that helps get the kids engaged and where they're not just on the outside, so.
Elliot, we've had discussions, so you'll know, off and on over the years, and--
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and it was put off on the shelf, but I've asked Gary Lenhart, who's a member of the foundation--
Yes.
--Rec Foundation, to look at it and talk to his people that are on that board, and we'll just see where we go from here.
Well, it's my understanding that the advisory commission was going to write a letter of recommendation to the foundation for consideration in this year's, whatever funding they have for the meeting that's coming up in July. That's what I was told anyway. I was supposed to receive a copy of that letter, and I haven't yet, and as I understand, that's a matter of public record, so I'll be curious to see if that has actually been included. I'll be contacting them to try to get a copy of that record or that letter as soon as possible, and I would hope the foundation would consider it. It's not a very big expense, considering.
You said Kitty Hawk.
Yeah, check out the Kitty Hawk Skate Park. It's about 5,000 square feet. We really wouldn't need much more than that. 6,000 square feet tops. Makes a really small footprint, so, you know, placing it somewhere is not an issue. My advice would be to put it near downtown and not try to hide it to where when people come from out of town to visit, that they actually go back, go to the downtown area afterwards. And, you know, you don't want to put it out in the woods somewhere. I'll go Catawba Meadows would be fine, too.
Any questions?
Elliot, you've got a group here tonight, but what do you estimate the total number of skateboarders there are in Morganton?
And that's why I'm basing the 5,000 or 6,000-square-feet thing on. From the people I've met, and we have a little over 100 people on our mailing list, you're looking at probably 200 or 300 folks that are here immediately, and thus the small size of the footprint. We don't need like a huge park like the one in Asheville, like Food Lion Park. I've been to 20 or 30 up and down the East Coast in the last five years, and that one's like, it's just world-class. It's that 6,000 square feet, my best estimate is based on the need we have here. It's not a very big park. Check out the Kitty Hawk Park, and that's what we're going for.
The biggest one in Asheville?
I don't know the exact square footage, but it's easily four times bigger than the Kitty Hawk Park.
And where is it located?
Was it funded by Food Lion?
They did have a part, partly funded by a corporate sponsor, yeah, absolutely.
Where is it in Asheville?
It's right at the bottom of Lexington. If you go into the bridge there, if you're going up 240, if you look at the right, look to the right, just as you pass the Merriman exit, you'll see it on the right.
Really?
Just off of 240, yeah. And it's, every time I go there, there's folks there from out of town that I meet there that are there just to skate that park because it's, you know, it's a nice park, so.
Appreciate you making a presentation.
No, no, no problem. Thanks for listening.
Thank you a lot. Any other, wait a minute, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Elliot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, anyone wishing to speak for or against the budget?
I don't know whether this is time to do this or not, but I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make, Mr. Mayor. Number one, it's good to see a good crowd here. Lets me know that we've got people in our community that are concerned about what happens, and I'm glad to see. I'm assuming that probably a lot of you are here for Mountain View Recreation Center in support of it. I'm aware that this facility's been neglected for many years, and I also support it. It's about time we did something. I don't know what you heard or you've been told, but I do support it. I do question the addition of tennis courts. To me, I would, if I use the facility, I'd rather have air conditioning in the gym, but if tennis courts is what you folks want and you feel comfortable with it, then I'm all for it. That's all I've got to say.
Close the public hearing, councilman.
I move we adopt the ordinance-- I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. I move we adopt a budget ordinance for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Second.
All right, we have motion now. We're back to the discussion again.
Sally, one question concerning the, I guess, downtown islands. At one point, we had seen a figure of 50,000, and then it went to 91. I think there was some grant money. Could you cover that for us, please?
I can. Included in, part of the capital funding in the general fund is $95,500, and that is budgeted to complete the islands that, if you see them on Green Street and Sterling Street, they're painted hash marks, and they're drawn out, basically, but not cut out of the asphalt. None of the curbing and the guttering has been done for them and the plantings. We had an opportunity to apply for some grant money. Our share of that cost was going to be $41,000, and we applied for the rest of it in grant money. We have since found out that we are not going to make it to the second round of that grant, so that project will not get done, and that will not get spent next year. But we have been invited to reapply for that in the next grant cycle.
And one time, we had talked about the islands on, I think, Buchell Street. If the state does their projected plans, will that be a part of this budget?
Now, that is not a part of this budget, the islands and all on Buchell Street, but later tonight, if we approve this budget, we do have dollars included that are in our Powell Bill funds that would be to improve each leg of the intersection on either side of Buchell and Avery intersection. And that will include some additional parking and some work because the state is going to come through and redo and upgrade the traffic signal and everything at that intersection. So we would do our work on either side of that at the same time as they are creating some bike lanes and that sort of thing. The addition to islands and any of the improvements that would happen on that section would be brought to you later from a different funding source, not included in the budget before you tonight.
Thank you.
Sally, one of the comments you made about what the state plans to do on that corner, the upgrade of the signal is a red and green light, not the caution light.
Correct. It's a real stop light.
And what is the schedule? Lee, do you have any idea?
No.
No idea?
At present time, our research and contractor has to be left, and then they'll, the islands will have to get built, and then they'll come in and put their signalization in.
Okay. Any other?
Does that mean if within the next year?
Oh, yeah. It should probably happen within this paving cycle.
We don't want to start any of that work before the festival, so it'll be after September. So we don't create any conflict with that thing with traffic. It'll be after September.
Can we limit how far we go out in the street with these islands? I get a lot of folks that kind of upset that the island may be a little bit too far out, and I've noticed some black marks on the curb where they run into them, so we need to think about not, maybe, you know, it's pretty and I like them, but you don't need to stick out in the streets for.
I think one of the things Cheryl confirmed this, when we were first doing that several years ago, that's on purpose, to slow things down.
Mm-hmm, it is. We actually went back and made some smaller. Didn't we go back and make a few of them a little bit smaller? We changed a couple of the corners, I think, a long time ago.
Lee, notice that there's some construction ahead signs just been put up near City Muffler, but on the other side of the street, like going toward downtown, and I've seen no construction. Is that for that part of the Buchell and Avery intersection? They just put them up. Construction ahead, isn't it, Sidney? Have you seen it?
I believe that's for the intersection you're talking about.
I think that's for, I think that's related to the street prep work for resurfacing, but I'm--
Okay.
I had to look at that.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the 2015-16 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a very good budget, Karen Duncan. Excellent budget. Thank all the department heads and all the people that work with you and your staff, and Sally and everybody that did a great job, without doubt.
Ma'am, I make a motion to adopt the schedule of fees and charges for fiscal year 2015-16.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Year-end budget amendment, Sally, 2014-15.
Yes, it is also that time of year. Now that we approved a budget for next year, now we move back into the current year, so we're back in 2014-2015. You're getting ready to end June 30. As is customary, this time of year, we kind of take a look and do some cleanup in some line items and opportunities that we need to correct budget issues at this stage of the game. So we need to consider them by fund, because that's the authority under which you adopt your budget, and we'll talk about each one of those as we go. Is that acceptable? First one is the general fund, and of course, that's where we've got a lot of line items. You will see that increases in revenues, Avalorum taxes are coming in, about $74,000 above what we budgeted, motor vehicle taxes about 71. Recall, the state's just been through a change in how we do that, and so that's been a little questionable, how to predict that very closely the last couple of years. Community house restricted contributions, just under $60,000 that have been received by private donations for the community house. Electrical permits are up by about $24,000, and then seller surplus property, of which we have no way of guessing very closely, at the beginning of the year, $114,000. That makes up the $343,820. And then you can see the about three pages of line items that are being adjusted within the budget. I will say to you, as you look down there, you will see an awful lot of maintenance and repair. That could be anything from buildings to vehicles to air conditioners to, you'll see a line item in there for awnings. We're having some difficulties with the awnings on this building. They are coming apart and have suffered some damage replacing those. Happy to try to answer any questions in there. There are really no tremendously large numbers in there. The largest number is in recreation part-time salaries, and that is really, I guess, year after year, you know, we plug a solid dollar amount in there, and depending on what happens, how many tournaments, how many different things happen, that changes. Let's see, what else can I say about it? Or do you have any questions about it? Maybe that's, oh, let me say this. Also, as we have been accounting for the improvements at the community house, which is a part of the general fund, we have been accounting for the projects as we have budgeted for them, as we have let those, and accounting for the private donations as they have been coming in. We will continue to do that. However, that's an annual budget, and this budget is going in multiple years. So Karen finally dawned on us that we should set that up as a capital project budget, because the capital project budget is something that goes through multiple fiscal years. So the $723,000 at the very end of that budget amendment is to set those funds up in the capital projects fund. It's not new money. That's not anything. It's just actually setting it up in the capital projects fund.
Motion to approve the general fund budget amendments for $343,820.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the electric fund budget amendment, Sally?
Yes, and that is for $600,000, and that is absolutely, you'll see, that is all sale of power and purchase of power, and that's relative to where we are at this time of year and the weather, and that changes. Again, I'll remind you, that's the single largest two-line items in the city budget. Those line items are $30 million, and we're adjusting it by $600,000. So we did pretty well hitting it.
Make a motion to approve the electric fund budget amendment of $600,000.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one is cable fund budget, Sally?
Cable for $167,250. Telephone revenue is more than we expected, and so is internet revenue. We are also recommending to appropriate $115,000 in retained earnings, and you will see, when you go down, we've had quite a few bucket trucks and repairs that have gone down. You will see an increase in our telephone expense, which is directly related to additional customers and hooking those up. Also, we have had the same thing in our internet, in hooking up business customers, and if you look at our departmental supplies, that is directly related to the increased internet revenue. Contracted services, that's where we do programming and all of those things, and we really just have very little control over what the programmers are charging us. And I think that's it.
Move to approve the cable fund budget amendment in the amount of $167,250.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is capital reserve fund budget, Sally?
Yes, the capital reserve fund is something that we do an annual budget for at the end of the year. You have that before you tonight. You will see, and that's one of those that goes year after year after year. It's kind of like a project fund. You will see that we are recognizing the revenue that is coming into that fund from the property, from the dissolution of the redevelopment commission. You will see the transfer from cable, which is the payment from cable for the money that they borrowed in the upgrade. That's the final payment of that, and then you will see-- And then you will see the transfer from the general fund of the private monies that were collected for the community house to reimburse the capital reserve fund. And that's basically it.
Motion to approve the capital reserve fund budget amendment for $290,325.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, capital projects fund budget, Sally?
That's the one that we just talked about, but we have to do two sides of that. We have to do the general fund side and we have to do the capital projects fund side. So this is the capital projects fund side. Which establishes the capital projects fund for the community house renovation project.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the capital funds, capital projects fund budget amendment for $708,238.
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion.
So Sally, this is really just for the community house renovation project, correct?
Exactly. And, and that ties to the, the contracts and everything that we have let thus far.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to make a comment to, uh, Ms. Duncan that, uh, in, in my accounting courses at, at Western Carolina, I never ran across the term that she used for doing this, syncing up. So we're syncing it up.
We're syncing it up.
Syncing it up to make it.
Okay, we have the motion. Who was the second?
Sounded good to me.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Any other discussion?
May with that last comment, I'm gonna make sure I understand, spell syncing, it is not S-I-N-K.
Exactly. Cause that is an accounting term and not a good one.
Just for my clarification, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number four. Uh, consideration of award of contract for the installation of aeration equipment and associated electrical components for the interim aeration project at the wastewater plant. Sally?
It's mouthful, isn't it? Uh, we are still in the current year. And we are, you recall that at your last meeting, you awarded the contract to purchase the equipment in order to do this project. This is the short-term fix for the, um, pure oxygen system at the waste treatment plant. This is what we started talking about last April and you appropriated funds for. We have now taken bids, uh, to get a contractor on board, received two bids. And we are recommending award to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Brushy Mountain Builders, in the amount of $318,100. That's the base bid plus the addition that we bid um, to use ductile iron pipe instead of PVC. And we do recommend that we do that and we have enough budget to do that.
What, what did we estimate this was?
We estimated that the total project was gonna be right at $600,000, if my memory serves me correctly. And that might have been like 620. And that included the engineering work, this contract and the equipment. And we are under that. By, mm, by several thousand dollars.
Motion to authorize in contract with Brushy Mountain Builders to install aeration and electric equipment at the wastewater plant for the cost of $318,100.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, consideration of a reimbursement resolution for the design and preliminary engineering for the diffused aeration and sodium, uh, conversion.
Hypochlorite.
Hypochlorite.
Didn't like that word, did you? It's hard to say.
But it's written down.
Ooh, mhm. Yeah, I told Louis, after he had worked on the language describing this, cause, um, this is a legal document, and after he had worked on the language, that we were gonna get him a junior wastewater certificate because he had pulled out some very descriptive language in here. Um, okay, so now we're talking about phase two of this. We're talking about the longer-term process by which we are going to convert the waste treatment plant from pure oxygen to a more traditional treatment process. In addition to, uh, convert the bleach system, which we currently use, which is a chlorine gl- gas system, to actually bleach, a, a liquid type bleach system. We've done that process at the water plant already. And now we need to do that at the waste treatment plant. You approved 49-905 for the, uh, preliminary study for how we would go about doing this back in April. Now we're getting to the end of that. So now this is asking you to approve what you just approved in the 15-16, get my year right, in the 15-16 budget, $650,000, which is for the engineering, preliminary design, and all the work that will be required to get this ready to take to the state of North Carolina and to apply for and compete for zero interest money or very low interest money to do this project.
Make a motion to approve a resolution for reimbursement of the city for the cost of design and preliminary engineering for the diffused aeration and sodium hypochlorite conversion projects at the wastewater treatment plants in the amount, uh, up to 650,000.
Second. Have a motion second. Any discussion?
So this will be reimbursement to the city, correct?
Absolutely. At the time that the design work and, and all of the project, we would reimburse this cost to us and then spread it over the life of the loan.
When could, could, when could the work be started?
Well, what's gonna happen with this, if I've got my schedule right, okay? This goes to the state. September timeframe is when we are gonna send this to the state. Um, and that's within that grant cycle. Then we would hear from that. And then you're talking about, this is a two to three-year process. So we're, we're talking several years. And understanding that this is the preliminary engineering and design work that's leading us up to that about seven million dollar project to convert these things. Which is why we're attempting to get into the state cycle because if we can get this at zero interest money, even if we can get it at low interest money, which we did on the other improvements out there at 2% over a 15 to 20-year period, that's what we would like to do.
Thank you.
I, I think it's important that we recognize we're not getting reimbursed for anything from, except money that we're borrowing. Is that correct?
Exactly. In other words, we're fronting this cost now.
Right.
When the borrowing is approved, we will put that back in our savings. And then we will basically spread that cost over the life of the, the borrowing.
Thank you, John.
We're, we're paying for the whole thing, you know, just over a big period.
Exa- in accounting terms, we call that matching. We call that matching the cost to the period in which the asset has life and is being used.
Sort of like depreciation.
A lot like that.
In the real world, not the governmental world.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, and this is number six, am I right?
Yes.
Consideration of a professional services agreement to provide phase two stormwater assistance for fiscal year 2015-16, Sally?
Okay, now we switched years. So this is something that you are approving to become effective July 1, 2015. Each year, we are required by the state of North Carolina to do, um, certain public education and outreach in association with phase two stormwater protection, which is protection against runoff pollution. And for several years, we have done this with other municipalities in the region through the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. We contract with them and they basically do this for all of us, so we all split the cost up. So it's a cheaper way for us to be able to do this. Our costs would be $5,189. And this is the contract that allows us to continue that relationship with the COC.
Motion to approve the professional service agreement with Western Piedmont Council of Governments for phase two stormwater public outreach and education services in the amount of $5189.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is consideration of award of a contract for improvement at the Mountain View Community Center, Sally?
Mm-hmm.
Part A.
Part A.
Part A, okay. So we're in 15-16 again. And, and so what we did, when we went through the budget process and talked to you all about these infrastructure-type improvement projects, and there are several, um, we asked if we could group those together and create a larger amount and then go to the banks to get a private placement borrowing. Again, spreading the costs of them over a period of years. And you said that we could do that. So we have put projects together that total over a million dollars because that is how we get a better banking bid. So we're gonna take them one project at the time. Okay? First project is this one. Received bids June 12th, um, in, in City Hall. And this is for the improvements at the Mountain View Communi- Community Center that deal with the, um, reworking of the entrance, replacing the canopy, reworking the drainage, the parking in the front of the building, doing some additional sidewalk and, and connectivity work down the side of the building. Again, these are my descriptions, down the side of the building that would then connect the indoor pool with the Mountain View Center. This is doing some, some sidewalk improvements around there. And basically, creating an opportunity where we fix the drainage problem and where the water pools up and puddles at the entrance to the building. That requires some parking lot fixing and all of that. That's what this project is. We have budgeted $186,000 for this. And we received a bid from Bennet Grading and Excavation of Nebo. They have done work for us before and, and did good work. Um, we also received two other bids, but those were both higher than Bennet's bid. His bid is $185,983.25. And that does not include the canopy. The canopy would be purchased later. And so basically, we were just a little bit under on our estimation for this. But the next project, as you'll see, we had money left over and we would recommend that we transfer between the two because they're both capital projects funds in the recreation budget in order to be able to purchase the canopy and get it all done.
Okay.
I move to approve, uh, the contract with, uh, Bennet Grading and Excavation of Nebo, North Carolina for the Mountain View Community Center, uh, Part A Improvement Project at a price not to exceed $185,983.25.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, next is consideration of award of a contract for improvements at Mountain View Community Center, Part B, Sally?
Okay, this is the other piece of the, I'll call them the outdoor Mountain View renovations in next year's budget because we do have some that would come later to you in the budget year for improvements inside the center. Um, again, we received bids. This is the project that would, uh, support clearing of vegetation, re-grading of the site, correcting some pretty serious drainage issues. The entire Mountain View site drains through this area and we need to do some fairly extensive drainage work over there in order to ensure that we protect that property and that we handle that appropriately. Um, it includes all of the curbing and guttering. It includes a new parking lot that would be constructed that would support both the pool and the Mountain View Community Center. It includes installation of LED lighting at the parking lot and at the, um, new courts that would be built that will be used for tennis, stripe for pickleball, and also for soccer play within that area. Um, two sets of lights. It includes, I've left out something. What have I left out? Did I hit it off?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay. It's a lot of things. Uh, the, we budgeted for this project, we budgeted $485,000 for this. The construction bid came in, the low re- we got three bids again. The lowest responsive bidder was again Bennet Grading and Excavation in the amount of $404, $404, $481,000. That's a hard number to say. Um, we would recommend that we associate also with this contract, asking you to award in that amount plus a contingency. This is where we have a lot of drainage, we have a lot of site work. And we don't know exactly what we may find once we get in there. So we would ask that you assign the contingency of $37,458.56 to this. Additionally, the lights, which are budgeted at $45.5, will be purchased under a separate contract because that's an equipment purchase. And those will be installed by the electric department.
Before we bring this to a motion, can, can the public make any comment now? Or were they the first limited to making it start?
No, it's all right. I'll let somebody speak.
Well, I hate to get.
That's up to you.
I, I just got, I want to say something. We've got 13 tennis courts in Morganton and the college has four. That's 17 tennis courts. We aren't getting much play on them. And I'd like for somebody that, that supports tennis courts over redoing the gymnasium, putting air conditioning or putting the floor in it, to come up and speak and make me feel better about it.
Bill Naylor? Talk to him about tennis.
Here comes somebody. Okay.
State your name and where you reside, sir.
Uh, my name is Ronald Conley. I live here in Morganton on 708 Jamestown Road.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if there's anything I can say to make you feel better, Councilman Con- uh, Simmons, but, yeah, you have tennis courts way over here at the college. But all these kids don't have transportation, they don't have access to those courts. Why not have something there to, to give the kids other, opportunities other than basketball? You know, what they need, need, uh, opportunities that will maybe lead them in a different path than just thinking, well, I'm gonna make it in sports.
That's a comment I want, that's a comment I want you to make.
That's my only comment I have about it. But you, you kind of threw me when you said, well, I'd rather see the basket, well, which the courts do need air conditioning, the floors need to be redone. And, and, but can't, can't both of those things be done?
Not at the same time.
Alright, you said there were gonna be two tennis courts, why not at least do one? At least give them an opportunity to broaden their horizons.
One, one of the things that we discussed during the budget preparation time and putting all this together, and Gary can speak to this better than I can, is, and, and actually Scott Lookadoo was one who, who kind of brought this point up in, in our budget talks, was exactly that. Because you already have a center and you have the aquatic center and you have a destination and you have that to offer more opportunities and more amenities at the same center, especially since we have staff at the center and we have folks who could be there to, to help and to assist with some of that. And that was part of the reasoning for creating different facilities. And, and Gary can address that much better than I can at the location where we already have a large investment that we need to, to, to grow the opportunities in that area.
I'd like to make a comment on it. Uh, I researched this and, and, uh, come to realize that, uh, the City Parks and Recreation, uh, hasn't built any new tennis courts in over 30 years. So, uh, giving everybody an opportunity to learn to play tennis, uh, I think is an excellent idea. And, uh, we went a step further with this in that we realized that, uh, the courts might be, uh, uh, might need to be used for other means other than just tennis. So we, we added two or three, uh, other different kinds of sports uh, in the layout of these courts so that these, uh, other sports that might not be so familiar to, uh, maybe all of us old folks, uh, but these, uh, young kids, uh, they're, they're very much familiar with the, uh, other sports that, uh, we're gonna put in the design of these courts. So I think it's, I support this fully. It's a great idea. And I, I think you'll find, once they get, uh, built and put in place down there, that, that, uh, a lot of young people are gonna use these courts. And, and they'll be covered up. And, and I think it's a great idea. I'm voting for this.
May I make a motion to authorize in contract with Bennet Grading and Excavation of Nebo NC for the Mountain View Community Center Part B Improvements Project at a price not to exceed $441,939.56.
Second.
Have a motion, have second. All right, motion, have second discussion. Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
State your name and where you reside.
Autumn. I'm new, just moved into downtown, business owner. I'm from Houston and in Houston, we use our tennis courts as well as skate parks. It's not quite so large, but they just have a couple of ramps set up as well as the basketball hoops and the soccer. And I know there's a lot of different already set tennis courts, so it might be a good idea to also let a little skating area, nothing too large, but you could always add that into the parks you already have as well.
Let you talk to Gary Lenhart.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Sally, the talk was about the drainage down there. Do we think this $441,000 will fix the drainage problem?
Yes, and Mark Young's not here, so I'm going to pretend to be him for right now. So, what, we've already had further down, we've had a failure that we have already repaired. And this, when we repaired that, we did that in a way to be able to accept this drainage improvement because at the time, it was planned that ultimately it is a better solution for the whole area. And I'm explaining this engineering stuff in non-engineering terms. But, we have wanted to do the drainage solution because we're already seeing failure in the drainage.
I guess my comment comes from the fact that we recently did one up near the Burke Arts Council by a private individual or private company. It didn't get fixed and the city had to go back and fix it. I just want to make sure that this one.
Oh, we're talking about irrigation?
Well, irrigation and the drainage because the drainage is the serious problem at Mountain View, as I understand it.
Yes, it is definitely runoff and stormwater runoff and how to handle that and how to take all of that from that area and get it around without basically destroying everything in the middle of it, which is the field and the area that sits next to, right now, a gravel parking lot in between the Aquatic Center, the Mountain View Community Center, and Mountain View School.
Would it interfere at all with the proposed connector to the greenway?
No, it would not. As a matter of fact, it would complement the greenway. Shall I talk a little bit about that?
No, just to make sure it doesn't mess up those future plans for that connector.
Yeah.
Okay, we have on Part B a motion and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number nine, consideration of award of a contract for street resurfacing for the fiscal year 2014-15 and 2015-16, Sally.
Okay, in this large quest to do and to bid out several projects, we have combined, and we've done this in years past, the 14-15 resurfacing money with the 15-16 resurfacing money in order to be able to do a larger project and hopefully to get more streets done. We accepted bids for resurfacing on June 16th. We received bids from two paving contractors. Between the two budget years, we have $434,000 to spend on street resurfacing. The lowest bid came from May Mead out of Tennessee, $386,764.66. So, we are recommending awarding that bid to them. Included in that amount is $73,927.28, $73,927.28 for our portion of the improvements for Buchell Street that we talked about earlier. Not islands, not concrete islands and that sort of thing, but the improvements on either side of that intersection that would happen. Back in the spring when we talked about that, you allowed us to consider a budget amendment out of Powell Bill fund balance to do those Buchell Street improvements. So, tonight, we're asking you to do two things, to award the bid for $386,764.66 to May Mead and to approve the Powell Bill budget amendment to appropriate that $44,000. This is based on a unit price for asphalt, resurfacing, milling, and all of that. So, as they get into the project, if we find out, because there's still some money left in this budget, and if we don't have to spend it on asphalt for the streets that are identified in your project, then we will be able to add additional streets and resurface more streets. But, that has to be done toward the end of the project because we pay for this, they've bidded a unit price and we pay for it as asphalt if it's come in. And, you know, your estimate of that may be just, we may need more asphalt than what we have estimated right now. So, right now, it's like a contingency. It can convert into resurfacing more streets.
I move to authorize a contract with May Mead Incorporated, Mountain City, Tennessee, for the 2014-15 and 2015-16 Powell Bill resurfacing of City Street, Sharon, Morganton.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One more motion.
Move to approve, to appropriate $44,000 in Powell Bill fund balance to complete this resurfacing.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number 10, consideration of award of a contract for resurfacing of city parking lots, Sally.
In the 15-16 budget, I keep looking at Karen, make sure I got my ears right. There are six parking areas for the city of Morganton that are to be resurfaced. Those include public safety headquarters, the impound yard behind headquarters. It includes the asphalt portion of the parking lot at the Berkmont Fire Station, only the asphalt portion, that's a small piece. Resurfacing both parking lots at Bethel Park, both entrances to Bethel Park, and then resurfacing of the comma parking lot. And we receive bids for all of these projects as a single paving project. And we received four, bids were submitted by four paving contractors for this project. And the lowest, and two of them were dollar amounts and two of them were no bids. And the lowest responsive bidder came from J.T. Russell &amp; Sons out of Conover. Again, they have done work for us before, $252,716.70. Would recommend that we award all of these. That is a little bit over the budget that we had included for all of these, but the comma parking lot is under. So, if we transfer money, then we are within the budgeted dollars for all of the parking lots.
Gary felt like we shouldn't do commas since building come tonight.
We really need to do comma. It's not in good shape, I got to tell you.
What's fair is fair, right, Gary?
Sally, the question, the motion will be for $248,000, but the amount, the amount.
What we did, let me tell you what we did too. We took out the striping, okay? They also bid striping and with that thermo, what's the name of that? Thermoplastic striping, right, that they apply. But, we have an employee who can stripe the parking lots. We did leave it, however, in for comma because it's a large parking lot and because of the use and what happens there, we feel like we can do that in the parks and it will not deteriorate quickly, but we felt like comma would, so we left it in for that. So, that is the adjustment from the $252 down to the $248.
Make a motion to authorize a contract with J.T. Russell &amp; Sons, Inc. of Conover, North Carolina, for the resurfacing of city parking lots as detailed in the summary above for a total not to exceed $248,159.19.
Second.
Your motion, second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration of award of a contract for resurfacing the Greenway Trail, Sally.
Had this planned in the current year, moved it to the next year so it could be a part of this project. This is the first section of the Greenway Trail, the one that was built early, 80, late It is approximately 1.4 miles and we are looking at resurfacing, doing some asphalt overlay, some patching and some work. And recently, we were all out there and it has some sections that really need this desperately. The bid came in from Johnson Paving and Crushing of Marion. Again, they have done work for us in the past. That's the lowest responsive bidder for $131,918. We have budgeted $125,000. We can use the savings from the comma repaving in order to do this and would recommend that we do that because we really want to get that entire section redone. Have recommended a contingency because there are some unknowns out there, the possibility of unknowns. It's a little bit different than a defined parking lot, so we're recommending a contingency of $7,500. So, we are asking that you contract for a total not to exceed $139,418.
Motion to authorize a contract with Johnson Paving and Crushing Company, Incorporated of Marion, North Carolina, for resurfacing a portion of Catawba River Greenway Trail for a total not to exceed $139,418.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion.
When will that paving start, Sally?
We have to do some preliminary work.
Some's been done with the gravel, correct?
Yes, and we are doing work with the gravel. When do you think, Lee?
Most of the gravel work's almost done, probably 45 days or so.
Like, August-ish.
Okay, any other discussion?
What will they do?
I mean, they'll have to.
Have to be closed?
I think that.
We'll have to close that section.
What are we going to do, grind those where the roots, if push the asphalt, have ground those down?
Yeah, there's going to be some grinding and, I mean, and then there'll be some areas like taken out and redone. It's pretty extensive work, is my understanding.
We're removing all the asphalt from the sections and having, we want the base, but we've got some base failures.
And I know that. And I know you, Councilman Thompson, has mentioned several trees and things, so trees that have to get taken out of the way and some of that, that needs to happen before that work gets done. So, it'll all have to be coordinated.
But, we will not close this whole section at one time. It'll be parts of it, is that...
They'll have to close it all because it's only access from judges.
You'd really, you could.
We'll close sections over the, I mean, we have.
Over to the bridge?
Yeah, so we have a chance to re-sign the contract or how they want to propose it because we'll have to, there'll be some getting paid, I'm sure. They will have certain things they won't get done at one time. So, there'll be sections that may not be safe to open to the public, so we want to make sure we can close them.
Think after pre-construction, we can better, and we will get the word out and use Joshua and S. News Herald to help us and try to get out kind of the plan and sort of set that out so folks that use it can know what's going on.
I hate we're not going to be able to get that done before the Red, White, and Blue Grays Festival because our Blue Grays fans like to walk the greenway.
They can still use it.
Well, they can walk it now. We're not going to block it off until after that. So, they'll be able to use it.
They'll be able to use it for us.
It just won't be resurfaced.
I wanted a pretty new surface there.
I hear you.
Excuse me.
Okay, we have the motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
First, it's almost killed us to get this to this stage. I just don't think we could do that in two weeks.
Okay, consideration of award of financing for the Mountain View Community Center improvements and facility upgrades, greenway resurfacing, parking lot resurfacing, Sally.
Okay, so this is, this is like the really good news, right? Because all of these things are needed and good improvements for our community. So, by grouping them all together and going out for banking bids for a borrowing of $1,065,500, we sent bids out to, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 banks. We received four bids back.
Karen Duncan's a magician.
And the lowest responsive bidder came from First Citizens Bank at an interest rate of 1.6%. And the fees to close the loan is $850. So, 1.6% and then we would basically pay for this over a period of four and a half years instead of all in one year. And that's a pretty darn good interest rate.
Make a motion to award financing for the Mountain View Community Center improvements and facilities upgrades, the greenway resurfacing and parking lot resurfacing to First Citizens Bank at an interest rate of 1.60 for a period of four and a half years.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'll have to abstain on the board of directors of First Citizens.
Okay, we have to vote on excusing you.
Okay.
Well, actually, our banking resolution says, I think it accepts that. I defer to Louis for a ruling on that.
Yes, I believe we've done that before.
We did the banking resolution that says normal course of business, that.
I think so and clearly, unless Councilman Thompson tells me otherwise, I'm assuming his interest, other than perhaps as a customer, is just that you're on the board.
Correct.
You're not like a majority shareholder.
No, I'm not a majority shareholder, leave me in for First Citizens, I wish I was.
Okay, we have a motion.
Okay.
We have a motion. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
We have a second?
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gentlemen, I appreciate you've done a lot of work, hard work today and a lot of good for this community. And I thank you very much and I want to thank all the people that came tonight to listen to us. I want to thank Karen again and her staff and department heads and everybody for putting a budget together, a good budget. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.